Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of May 8th, 2025. This meeting is being conducted as a public hearing and also being held remotely on Zoom. For the record, the Zoom ID number is 848-4064-1674. I recognize in attendance myself, Joseph Parisi, Michael Nyman, Peter Canavo, James Gelati, and Lauren Norton, and I declare we have a quorum. Our first order of business will be the approval of minutes of April 10th and April 24th, 2025. Are there any corrections or omissions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve both.
I would make a motion to approve both as written.
Second.
Pusher made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Our first item is our consent agenda. This is the approval for the Chair to sign the following decisions. 46 Atlantic Street, 497 Washington Street, and 84 Thatcher Road. Anyone have any questions about these? I'm sorry, and there's also 320 Main Street. Any questions on those decisions? Undertain a motion to approve signing?
I'd make the motion to approve signing of all four of those decisions.
Second.
Aiden seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a number of applications tonight, the first being the petition, petition to rebuild Gloucester LLC seeking to appeal a decision of the Building Commissioner pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 48, 815, and GZO 1.6 and 5.11 at 6810 Orchard Road and 22 and 24 Grapevine Road, represented by Seaside Legal Solutions.
Good evening. If I can come in as a panelist, that'd be great. Thank you. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I am an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street here in Gloucester, here on behalf of Rebuild Gloucester LLC. And let me share my screen, and we can get going. So the request tonight is an appeal of a decision of the building inspector, and it pertains to five lots, 6810 Orchard Road, as well as 22 and 24 Grapevine Road. And on this cover sheet, there are the lots highlighted in yellow and orange. So this is a copy of the letter that we received from the building inspector. We had asked for some clarification regarding how the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance applied to these parcels, and the issues that we take with this determination are twofold. One, the building inspector made a determination that all five of these lots, construction of all five of these lots, would be, quote, "part of a single project," triggering the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance to begin with, which we disagree with. Secondly, even if this were to be a single project, as described in the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, the 36-month segmentation allowance in the ordinance, we feel has been misapplied. The letter says that you would have to wait 36 months, sorry, the 36-month waiting period would start on the date of the occupancy of the last structure built, and we'll get into why that seems factually incorrect on its face. So by way of background, again, there are these five parcels. These lots were created to an A&R. This was previously all considered 10 Orchard Road. The house at 10 Orchard Road still stands there today. And since 2022, after these lots were created, my client has constructed a four-unit condominium complex. It is consisting of two of the lots, 6 and 8, and there is a duplex on each. Lots, it says 22 and 24 Orchard, so the 22 and 24 Grapevine are presently vacant. And so, again, like I said, the building inspector deemed all five of these parcels to be part of a single project, and I think incorrectly talked about how the 36-month segmentation allowance works. So the first one is the single project definition, and this one is kind of the big one because as long as this board agrees this is not a single project, then we're done. We don't have to worry about segmentation, we don't have to worry about unit counts. Just go, yeah, this is not a single project, and the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance only applies to single projects. And so, although I usually hate to quote directly, I'm going to quote, "Any application of residential development, the addition of one or more residential units that results in a development with six or more dwelling units on any parcel or contiguous parcels comprising a proposed development site." Okay? And so the idea behind that is, for example, as I mentioned, we have 6 and 8 Orchard Road. Now, they're two separate properties, right? They're different map and lot numbers, they're distinct lots on their own, but clearly, if I were to say to you, hey, 6 and 8, they're not part of a single development, you go, Joel, please, right? These two buildings, first off, they're twin buildings, they look alike, they're mirrored images of each other, they are located in the same street, and they're part of a single condominium complex. They have a shared driveway, shared utilities, shared landscaping, maintenance, et cetera. They're all part of the Orchard Estate condominium. And so this is what you are thinking of when you go, oh, even if they're on contiguous parcels, they're part of a single project, right? We would never try and argue that these two buildings within this one condominium complex, just because they happen to be in separate parcels, are not a single development. However, on the flip side, we have these two lots down on Grapevine that have nothing to do with 6-8 Orchard, except that at one point, they were all within the very large 10 Orchard parcel. These two lots are not on the same street, they have no shared access, no shared parking, no shared utilities. They will not be aesthetically similar to 6-8 Orchard. They will not be part of the Orchard Estate condominium. And if you were to walk from the driveway of the Orchard Estate condominium to the nearest driveway that would go in down here, it's a five-minute walk, walking at two and a half miles an hour, normal pace. These are not related properties, except that they have butt at the rear and once were known as 10. More importantly, the city is now, we feel, trying to have it both ways. Initially, my client was considering a single development project for these parcels, and when he applied to have those utilities down in Grapevine Road, at the time, the DPW was not aware of the water line that was actually up in Orchard, so as far as anyone knew, there was no water in Orchard. So we needed to get water up, and he said, oh, well, there's water down in Grapevine, we'll drag this through. And the city denied that, they said, no, these are separate lots, you cannot bring utilities in across Grapevine to your properties on Orchard. And my client spent $500,000, half a million dollars, bringing a water line around the corner up through Orchard to get to the Orchard site, because this city said that you cannot connect these properties and treat them, you know, to share utilities. And so it was very unfair, the city would then say, well, no, they're related, please, right? Half a million dollars, too late. The other thing I want to mention again is that the absolute life connectivity also comes from the way the zoning ordinance thinks about lots, right? Acts over the frontage, that sort of stuff. We are, if I wanted to do something on those Orchard lots coming from Grapevine, I would need relief from you to come in over Grapevine to get there. I wanted to come to Grapevine via Orchard, I need relief from you to do that. And we're not asking for any of that, we're saying, no, no, we're going to use our frontage, because they're two separate lots, they're a five-minute walk away, yeah, they'll share a fence line, and yeah, they're once part of a larger parcel, but this is not part of an ongoing single development. And so if this board would simply overrule that determination, like I said, we're done. You say, yeah, 6-8 Orchard, clearly they're part of a single development, and they need to be counted as one as such when you go for your Inclusionary Housing count, but 22 and 24 Grapevine have nothing to do with those. Make that determination, we're done. That being said, and the alternative, just to cover my bases, if this board agrees with the building inspector that somehow these are a single development or a related project that would trigger Inclusionary housing, and we still have this segmentation issue. Again, to quote directly from the ordinance, "Segmentation shall mean one or more development applications, the addition of one or more residential units, that results in six or more lots or dwelling units above the number existing 36 months prior to an application to develop any parcel or set of contiguous parcels." And so the 36-month has nothing to do with the occupancy of the last structure. Basically, the 36 runs, you're looking at this 36-month look-back period, you go, I today, May 8th, 2025, want to apply for a building permit, I have to look back and go, 36 months ago, May 8th, 2022, how many units were within this single development? And that's the question you have to answer. So the first application was the A&R back in July of '22, and we began bringing units online in the years that followed. So so far, we've created four new dwelling units. And so right now, you'd go, well, if I look back 36 months, there was only one, if, again, if you're counting this as all one development, there was only one, and so we've added four, and we can go add one more, which would be five, because again, the rule is, you can't create six or more than existed. So yeah, this would be unit six, but it's not six more than existed 36 months ago. Going from that, now you start rolling that 36-month look forward. And so unit one for 8 Orchard came online February 5th, 2024. So if we were to apply for another building permit for another structure, February 6th, 2027, you wouldn't say, has it been three years since the last thing was built? You'd go, what was present? How many units existed 36 months prior to your application? And if I'm applying on February 6th, 2027, well, I've got two, because I had the old house, and I had the first condo unit that came online, and that allows me to get my seventh unit without triggering the six or more than existed 36 months previous. And it rolls through like this, we have the chart, it was in the letter, it's in this also, shows you that as these units come online, a 36-month clock runs for each of them. Mr. Paccari's letter said, no, no, I'm starting the 36-month clock at the occupancy of the last unit created, which would have been March 18th, 2025, 13 months later than the first unit came onboard. And so again, if this board believes this is part of a single development, although we still argue strenuously it's not, the 36-month segmentation rule certainly can't be pinned to the last unit built, it has to go by the express language of the ordinance, which is how many units existed 36 months prior to the application you're submitting. In such case, that 36-month look-back continues to roll as more units come into existence. So again, my request is to simply overturn the building inspector's determination, this is a single project, it's not. These are unrelated lots that came out of a master parcel, that have no shared facilities, no shared utilities, they can't even be quickly accessed, you know, by one occupant from one to the other unless you hop a fence. However, if you agree with the building inspector on this, I would ask you to please at least overturn his determination as to how the 36-month rule is applied, and say, well, I do think this is a single development, we're not going to peg the 36-month on the last one, we're going to continuously look back at how many units existed 36 months previous to your application as the applications roll in. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'll leave it at that.
One question done. So if somebody doesn't want to build Inclusionary housing, and they're doing a subdivision, should they just take their time to avoid that, take forever to build it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but per the express language, you could build, so I have a vacant lot, and I subdivide it into 10 house lots.
Right.
I can build five single families, and then 36 months from the time unit one comes on, I can build six. 36 months after unit two comes online, I can build seven, because as I look back, how many units existed 36 months prior to my application?
So the intent of the ordinance was to create affordable housing, and you've come up with a way to get around that?
No, the intent of the ordinance was to create Inclusionary housing. I've come up with nothing, I am quoting the express language, and as I'm sure, you know, any lawyer who has passed the bar can tell you that legislative intent is irrelevant in the face of express terms of legislation. So if the city did not mean to create this 36-month look-back period, then they should not have expressly said, you cannot create six or more than existed 36 months prior application. Those are the express words of the legislation. I'm creating nothing, I'm reading the language and applying it with a calendar and, you know, occupancy permits.
Any other questions at this time for Joel? Okay, we'll call up the city to defend.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Suzanne Egan, General Counsel for the City of Gloucester. I think it's important, first of all, to address the issue of whether or not this is a single project. So it's, I think it's obvious to us all that this is a single project, this is one lot, one builder, one A&R, a development project. So I think it's obvious that the Inclusionary zoning ordinance applies in this instance. You did see a copy of the A&R, I do have that for you, that I can hand to you if you are interested in looking at it. I'll just give you copies now, so while I'm speaking. So as you can see, this is one parcel of land, a large parcel of land that was split into five lots that abuts, that is between Orchard and Grapevine Avenue, and those lots were created. The intent of the Inclusionary zoning, as the chairman has stated, Inclusionary zoning ordinance is to create affordable units. The ZBA's job and the building inspector's job is to make sure that the zoning ordinance is applied and interpreted in a way that makes sense, not in a way that defeats the entire purpose of the ordinance. The appellant's argument in this instance is to defeat the purpose of the Inclusionary zoning ordinance. It's a single project, what's also included there is the assessor's records as to when each building was built, which is in 2023, there were those four dwelling units. So for right now, what the ZBA or what the building inspector has performed is, the next unit, what does the inclusionary zoning ordinance apply to the next unit? Is an affordable unit required? Now, there's a case law on the notion of segmentation and using segmentation in your development project to avoid the application of regulations, Inclusionary zoning, environmental laws, you know, regulations that deal with development. And what I would like to do is to ask the board to continue this matter, and I can provide you with a legal opinion regarding segmentation, what that means, what the effect is, and what this board's role is in an appeal such as this.
Should we go along with that recommendation, or should we take testimony, or why don't we wait until we get a legal opinion?
Clearly interested in Suzanne's legal opinion, there's no question about that. I think, can I ask a question before we continue? So I guess my question is, at this juncture, does Joel's, does he need our, is the building inspector's interpretation at this point preventing the applicant from building another unit?
No, and I think you're raising an interesting issue as to whether or not this is ripe, which is, is this a matter that's relevant to the board right now in order for the developer to apply for a building permit and move forward? He's asked a question, what he's even shown you on the chart, is this, this is what the effect of this decision that the building inspector wrote in 2025, this will be the effect in 2027, 28, 29. And typically, when there's an appeal before the board or the court, it has to be ripe, it has to have some meaning. There's no application before the building inspector right now. It was a letter, a response, and under the zoning ordinance, it's section 1.5 is what your, the ZBA's appeal is. You have the authority to review appeals from building inspectors, rulings, determinations, and decisions, whether this letter talking about an instance that will happen in three years from now, as the applicant has said, in 2020, or two years from now, in 2027, whether that's ripe, and an issue before this board that is relevant to be decided, I think is another good question to answer, because we don't have any, he doesn't have anything specifically before him. There was no building permit, there was no plan to say, I'm intending to build two units here, or, you know, three units on this lot. So there's nothing specifically before you to make it.
So then, so then if the developer came, and maybe this is a hypothetical question that you won't answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So if the developer comes, and, you know, Joel's argument at this point, if it, even if it's a single, even if it's considered a single development, like you're arguing right now, that he still should be allowed to build another, that he still should be allowed to build one more.
Whether or not he.
So then, if he makes application to the building inspector for another single-family dwelling, if the building inspector says no, with, for, you know, for whatever reason, Rob decides to say that, Joel could then appeal that decision back to us singularly if he chose to do that. Is that fair, safe, and or not?
And it's not that the building inspector will deny an application, there'll just be that requirement that it is an affordable unit.
But I think Joel would argue it shouldn't be an affordable unit, even if it's treated as a single, because he can build that fifth unit within the language of the ordinance.
Right, so he, right, he would be calling it a fifth unit, and we would be looking at it as the sixth. I mean, it's clear that there's going to be six units, one more unit, and I think that there will be six units in this development.
Okay, so I guess I'll just have to wait and see.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. You wish to give you a little rebuttal there?
So first off, I appreciate the board, you know, may want to get further counsel. I want to point out, this was filed 34 days ago, it's been over a month, and if the city legal department hasn't provided you what you needed for this, we're actually one meeting beyond what otherwise would have been heard at, this would have been heard at the previous meeting, we're already one meeting out, and I think it's unfairly prejudicial to make my client wait for an answer so that the city can take, you know, more time than they otherwise would have been allotted to begin with. But again, this is simpler than that. You don't need a legal opinion to read, I'm not asking for interpretation, I'm not asking for analysis, I'm not asking for case law about segmentation, I'm saying, read the ordinance. You cannot create six or more units than existed 36 months prior to application, those are all plain English languages, you are all capable of making that determination. But the second point I want to make out is this is very much, you know, I want you to think, there is an actual element beyond, you know, just the legal argument we're making here. Here you have someone, again, the city made him spend half a million dollars because the city refused to allow him to treat this as a single project for the sake of utilities. For the city to now say, this is a single project, so you can't build another unit unless you sell it for $290,000, even though it's going to cost you twice that to build, is incredibly unfair. Now, had they said, yeah, you know what, run the utilities through Grapevine, this would be one big development, then fine, we'd be here and say, yeah, that once we get to six more than we had before, we are stuck providing an affordable. You know, we can't have it both ways. But the same way, we can't have it both ways, the city can't have it both ways either. You can't tell them, you can't use this as a single parcel, and you can't run utilities through your contiguous land. And again, this is real impact, this was, you know, half a million dollars in infrastructure work, repaving Orchard Road, et cetera, to then say, well, now we think they're a single project, even though we refused to let you treat it like that when it would have saved you a ton of time and money. And the same thing about the ripeness argument. Excuse me, I didn't, you know, come here on a whim, I have a letter from the building inspector that says, if you are agreed by this determination, you can appeal to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals. The billing department told us it was ripe because their letter says, I can appeal this decision. Right? For them to come, again, try and have it the other way, well, you know, we made the determination because it favored us to try and stop you, but now that you're trying to appeal this, well, maybe it wasn't actually appealable. Well, don't tell us it's appealable, and then try and argue it's not. Don't tell us we can't treat this as one single project, and then try and force us to treat it as a single project. This is, you know, beyond zoning, this is about fairness and, you know, kind of honoring your word and your commitment as a municipal body. So again, if the board would like to have a continuance to allow Attorney Egan to get you a legal opinion, I understand, I won't object to it, but I do think it's incredibly unfair that 34 days after application, you don't have a legal opinion in front of you. And there's another way in which, this, you know, this is someone who is trying to construct housing in the city of Gloucester. I don't know if you've noticed out there, we are short on housing, of all types.
We're short on affordable housing.
We're short, you read the 2017 production plan, we're short on all types of housing. And here's someone trying to get some stuff done, and this city at every turn is trying to make it harder, even when they have to tie themselves in knots and contradict things they did previously, just to continue to make it harder. So I really hope that, you know, in addition to the very clear legal languages in this ordinance, that you would also consider the overall fairness of telling them, this isn't a single project, go put a new water line through the entire road, and then saying, well, actually, now it is a single project, go take several hundred thousand dollar loss on your next unit. He already took a half a million dollar loss in infrastructure work for the city. To ask him to take another, you know, X hundred thousand dollar loss for an affordable unit is just beyond, beyond any concept of fair. So I'll leave it at that, I'll be happy to request a continuance to the next meeting so that you can get the legal advice you should have had.
One question, too, was what stood out is the use of the common driveway. How do you say they're not part of a project? Common driveway wouldn't come into play if they were three individual lots, it wouldn't be allowed.
There is no common.
Have to be part of the division, on your plan there is.
The plan for.
Common drive going through lot two and one, two and three from one.
Mr. Chair, can I come see what the.
It looks like a one project.
So that was the A&R plan that divided it. So that was the old driveway that serviced the old house, so that was just, we were citing on the plan. But again, even then, I'm not going to concede to it, but I think if you said, hey, listen, we think 6, 8, and 10 are related, I go, well, 10's not part of the condominium, and 10 was an existing house, but they at least, you know, at least on the same street, like maybe you get a little stuff there, but that common driveway is gone. The only common driveway now is between lots two and three, which we agree, even though they're separate lots and separate buildings, are clearly part of a single development. It's part of the Orchard Estate condominium, that is a single development. The common driveway you look at here was just back when this entire parcel was 10 Orchard Road, and they had a loop through driveway. That's gone now, you just come in, would be the western side now, the driveway exists, you come in, you go back out. But again, even to that point, Mr. Chair, lots four and lots five are what we're talking about, and there's nothing connecting that old driveway, the new driveway, et cetera, to down to, you know, five and four. Thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to continue while we obtain some legal guidance for the board to make a decision. Sorry.
Just response. So I would just like to make sure that is on the record, that the DPW and its decisions about the infrastructure within the city is not related to the permitting process, as I know this board knows, but I think it's important to understand that there's two different aspects. This board has jurisdiction over the zoning ordinance, and that is the permitting for the land use, whether or not the DPW's water infrastructure is available in a certain way has nothing to do with the permitting of this project. So I just want to make sure that that is clear and that you understand that, and it in no way indicates whether or not this is a single project.
Yeah, I think we'll leave the public hearing open, obviously, because we haven't even taken any testimony. Do you think we should get, I think we all want to study it a little more and have some legal advice before we dig in. So if anyone was going to speak, I'd ask that you, what do we have on the 29th, eight hearings?
Can we just get on the record its neighbors? Because there are six of us neighbors here.
No, we haven't opened.
No, no, no.
We haven't opened the public hearing yet, the testimony. So if anything, it would be people in favor first and then against, but we're going to wait to do that.
So we'll get notice of another hearing of this.
We're going to vote right now when to continue it, too.
Okay, great, thank you.
I like hearing like fresh, after we've sort of listened to what Suzanne has to say to us and stuff like that, and think about it some more ourselves, and then the testimony's fresh on that night, instead of trying to, for me, anyway, trying to remember what people said.
So let's make a motion to continue to June 12th.
I make a motion to petition Rebuild Gloucester LLC, seeking to appeal decision of Building Commissioner pursuant to MGL 40A 815 and GZO 1.6 and 5.11 at 6810 Orchard Road and 22 and 24 Grapevine Road, to continue to June 12th?
Second. Motion made and seconded to continue, roll call vote? No roll call, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's continued. Thank you for the people, sorry, we just want to make sure we have a good understanding before we get deep into it. Our next hearing is the petition of Charles Crowley in Clare Sanford. They're seeking, it says a special permit, but they're seeking to appeal a decision of the Building Commissioner. They're seeking, this is a special permit, but they're seeking to appeal the decision of the building commissioner to issue a building permit to fifteen Biskie Head Point to construct an open structure on the pier under GZO one point six at fifteen Biskie Head Road. Who's speaking? I'll remind everyone, if you do come up, we need your name and address first for the record and then go right ahead.
Okay, I'm Charles Crowley. Just to begin with, I guess why are
Address, please.
Uh, nineteen Biskie Head Point.
Thank you.
I'm the applicant, I guess, whatever. Uh, so we're the closest neighbors to the Marina. The Marina is accessed through two easements across our prop-
Could you be quiet in the audience, please? Hello? Hello? Can you be quiet in the audience, please? Thank you.
You got to go, and please get close, it's hard to hear.
I'll start over. Okay, why are we here? Uh, we are the closest neighbors to Harren Way Marina. The Marina is accessed through two easements across our property. These easements contain some limitations, so it's important to us to keep abreast of what's going on at the Marina. Okay? Over the years, several building permits have been granted to Harren Way Marina without the building inspector understanding that the Marina was landlocked. The most recent example happened in two thousand sixteen when the inspector granted a permit for a large shed. A few weeks ago, I asked the building inspector about the Marina's current permit to build a building onto the pier and questioned why it wasn't required to get a special permit, given the landlocked nature of the property. The inspector said that, quote, "The Marina had road frontage," unquote, and pulled the property up on his GPS screen. I showed him the property lines and he admitted that he made a mistake. A simple mistake, a good guy. Uh, at the time, I thought it was a simple administrative procedure that we were going to go through. He said, fell out of paper. Uh, to clear this up and only later understood
Sorry, excuse me. People in the hallway, could you please take your conversation downstairs? It's very distracting. Thank you. People in the hallway out by the stairs?
Ready?
Yeah, sorry.
So at the time, we thought that it was a simple administrative procedure to clear this up. Given some paperwork to fill it out by the inspector, little did I know at that time that I was actually signed up to go to this permit, that I had to this hearing and that I had to pay a $250 fee. Seems a little bit of a, sort of absurd way to handle what was just an administrative error. I, I think that you guys should have a better way around that and I think that to put us in this position and to make us have to pay 250 bucks for an error is a little bit of a stretch. So I, I just want to say, we, I kind of feel like we're here involuntarily, I'd say. Okay, so why is this important to us? We're not just being fussy neighbors. Harren Way property is entirely made up of filled salt marsh and therefore is almost entirely underwater during flood tides. If you'd like it, I have pictures I can show you. The new pier and building we are discussing are made entirely inaccessible by about, oh, six hundred feet during the high seasonal tides. The effect of all the Marina's activities, uh, this, uh, affects all the Marina's activities on the upland side of their property, the part that it plots us. Basically, because of this flood stuff, everything that, they only have a little bit of land that's somewhat above and that's right on our property line. Okay, so all the activity that happens there is really intense. They store their floats on the property lines, their sheds, their storage facilities, dumpster, all that's located on the property line. Um, we feel that the zoning setbacks are being ignored and that the parking lot shielding requirements have, are also being ignored. Uh, I mean, just as an example of this, last year, or I guess the year before, they store fifty, no, twenty-five floats that are about twenty-five feet long on the property line exactly. Up on Sawhorses, they decided to have Atlantic Power Wash, Power Washer come and wash these floats. Each one of these, you can imagine, you've seen floats, they got trousers of mussels this long. Each one of those probably, when they were power washed, dropped about fifty pounds of crap on the marsh, right at our property. Nobody bothered, nobody cleaned it up, it sat there and festered. I mean, this is, this is, this is fall. You know what Thanksgiving was like at our house? So again, we're not being fussy neighbors. This is the truth and that is, I mean, what do you have to say about that? I, I don't know. At any rate, so, uh, what we would really like is just simple enforcement of the zoning requirements. And this is complicated because we've never gotten a straight answer as to what the requirements are. And the reason for that is kind of simple. First off, as a handlock, landlocked parcel, Harren Way should be required to obtain a permit for the zoning board of appeals for most voting projects. And there's some things, like you can rebuild things, but it actually says change, substantial enlargement, but the word change. So if you're going to change a building, it's pretty broad. You're pretty much are required to go to you when you, when you do much in this situation. Okay, um, this has never happened. I know that this is to a degree procedural, but it's important to us, is that it protects our property. Okay, and so I know we're saying, they got to go to you to do anything, yeah. But the thing is, we have easements that restrict certain things and so we feel that adhere to the rules, that's all. Um, so, uh, let's see, uh, we do, um, the Marina has claimed that this, we, we understand, I guess, that the Marina's claimed that this special permit might be unnecessary, um, in this particular case, as there was previously a building on top of the old pier that was destroyed. Well, this is true. The building was completely different in both its physical location on the pier, this new one's at a different location, uh, and, uh, its shape and design and orientation. I do have the plans from the building inspector's file of that original pin, uh, building, if you want to see it. It was approved as a metal frame roof, canvas roof structure. I mean, it's really quite different. If you want to see it, I can show it to you. Okay, so what we'd like would be, um, so as I said, uh, just reasonable, uh, you know, enforcement. Our concern is that the gradual building and expansion that routinely goes on at Harren Way is ignored. The building inspector's response, by the way, this is not the current building inspector. The building inspector's response is always that these structures are existing, quote. This answer makes no sense in the digital age. Come on, with a click of the mouse, you can look at a Google Earth timeline and you can see when something's there. Now, I know the city's got a policy of a ten-year look back, but come on, this thing that it's existing, that might have been, that might have flown twenty, ten years ago, but right now, we just need to get rid of that word. You just need to get rid of that excuse. It's just not fair. Okay, one issue about Harren Way is that before you can have enforcement, you need to know what is allowable under Gloucester zoning regulations. I've repeatedly asked this. Currently, we are dealing with an attorney because Marina has taken away an easement we have. We're, we hired a litigant last week. We have, they've looked at all this too. And what we have been told is that Harren Way property is zoned EB, extensive business. Extensive business allows, uh, allows for clubs, but only if they're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Looking back through the building inspector's files, in nineteen, as far back as nineteen eighty-eight, the inspector denied them a permit for this reason. The reason, the Marina was allowed to continue as a business because they claimed they were, quote, "A commercial Marina and not a club." And we're simply continuing activities that have been going on for, on the property for a long time. I.e., there was no change of use. Harren Way now is a club. I think it's in your packet, it says private club. If you look on the website, you say it's private club. If you look on their, their ten thirty-one permits, it's licensed as a private recreational facility. If you look on my easements, my easements are for a private club. Okay, so in, so Harren, so Harren Way is, is now a private club. And, you know, all the things that they said that they were doing in nineteen eighty-eight don't exist. All the stuff in the building inspector's files, there's about twenty things, boat livery, maintenance, all the stuff, not one of them happens. Including leasing seasonal slips, which is one of the things they did. They sold off all the seasonal slips they have. By the way, we feel illegally, but they've sold them all off. So, so it's now only condominium owners and club members. There is some leaseback, people who own them, lease them to people, but there is no retail operation at all. So for this reason, we feel that, uh, this is a change of use and is not allowable in an EB district. So, you know, yeah, that's a question. We can't, it's very hard for us to ask, to, to say what is going on there if we don't know what's allowed. This actually gets even more complicated. You know how when there's a building and it's a landlocked parcel, you're allowed things that are grandfathered in? But basically, if something was built and it was legal at the time it was built, it's allowed. This situation's a little bit different. To add to the complexity, Harren Way was made non-conforming, landlocked in nineteen ninety-eight, not nineteen forty, when the buildings were built, uh, when it was separated from the adjoining properties that were held in, uh, in common ownership and then sold to the present owners. The property should only be grandfathered to uses that were allowed in nineteen ninety-eight. My lawyer has said courts have ruled you cannot claim, you cannot create your own hardship. So it's very difficult because you go in and talk to the building inspector and every time, there's a different standard being applied. So we would like some clarity to those, for those issues. However, for today, I think all we're asking for is that this building that was issued this permit in error be required to get a special permit. At that time, the Marina then should be asked, you know, are they compliant zoning as far as use? Uh, and all these other questions. But right now, I think that's maybe getting the cart before the horse. But it, I'm only saying this because it's a complex issue. So at any rate, I appreciate your time. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, um, you're, you're home. You say the easement was granted in, when?
The easement to my, from my house was granted, uh, about ninety-eight-ish, about the time that they, the Marina, uh, so what happened is Marina was sold.
So I think you, a little bit of confusion is between ownership, um, and what it is. It's a Marina.
Uh, it's actually
You even call it a, you even refer to it as a Marina.
It is, but by, but it's an extent, it's a business, just
Pre-existing
It's not a business.
It's a pre-existing Marina.
But it's not a business anymore. The, the building inspector actually brought that up. They said, you know, and, and they had to say that they were still a Marina and they, there's a, a letter right here, I can give you a copy of it, by their then president that swears and lists, oh, a page full of things that they still did. And the letter says, to reiterate, this is not a private club and continues to be a public Marina regardless of ownership. Uh, and, you know, and then they, they list all these things that were done in the past and all these things that they do. They don't do any of them anymore. I mean, and my argument, by the way, is mostly, we would like to know what it is because what we don't like is that we live in limbo, because they can go back to one thing and another thing and another thing, because there is no definition as to what they are. Anybody have questions?
I'm not sure that it's our job to find what they are. Our job to receive an appeal. In this case, he's appealing the building inspector's decision. That's really, I mean, I'm empathetic to what you're saying, but the only thing that's before us is that you're appealing uh, the building inspector's decision to grant a building permit.
Well, absolutely.
That's what's before us.
That is before you. Then
That's only
If you do the hearing, I absolutely agree with you. If you do the hearing, then we have to address the issues of, of use and is the use consistent with the zoning district? Yes, absolutely agree with you. Very simple.
Is, is this zoned MI Marina industrial?
EB.
EB.
Extensive.
I mean, whether they sell something, they're still a commercial entity. Okay, thank you. We're going to allow the city to defend the decision?
Sorry. Excuse me.
Why you?
So, Mr. Chair, just because we may have some factual questions, we would defer to the representative of the Marina at this point and then we can respond if that's
Well, you, you're first to defend the decision. That's not his job.
Okay, I can defend
I'm not interested in what he thinks about the building inspector's decision.
Okay, sorry, I was Yeah, okay, I, I was
Maybe ask
I was going to have, um, see if he wanted to address the, the use and what the Marina was used for and whether or not it was business and allowed. But I will just address the specific issue before the zoning board of appeals, which is whether or not that building permit should be revoked because of lack of frontage. So this, I believe this was before, um, this board back in two thousand twenty-three for the reconstruction of the, um, docks. At least this, um, the Marina was, there was a reconstruction of the docks and this discussion of the screen porch came before the building inspector and it was going to go before the city council for a lowlands permit and it was decided that a lowlands permit was not necessary and a zoning certificate was issued, um, for the reconstruction of this dock and also for the screen porch, as Mr. Crowley alluded to. And so we, the, this building permit was properly issued because this is a pre-existing use. It's allowed in this district and this is viewed as a structure which is consistent, um, with the zoning ordinance. And there was in two thousand twenty-three, a zoning certificate issued, um, for this structure. And I don't believe that's in your file, but we can provide that to you. There was, um, discussion with, um, the, the, um, the club and the, their engineer at the time, which was the GZA with regard to reconstructing this dock and then putting the screen porch on it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody feel like you understand this any better?
No, but I'm, I'm comfortable if Suzanne thinks it's legally permitted, then I'm, I'm not going to put myself in a position to countermand the building inspector. But that's how I think about it.
Okay. Yeah?
No, so they, in
No problem.
In two thousand twenty-three, there was an issue as to, there was a reconstruction on the property. And there had, in order to, I think, believe it was to, with regard to the chapter ninety-one license, in order to do the docks, there had to be a determination from the zoning, um, inspector as to whether or not this was compliant with zoning. And that zoning certificate was issued at that time. So there was a determination that's already been made. This is the second time this, um, determination has been made that this building permit was properly issued. And it appears from the application of Mr. Crowley that they're arguing that because the, the, the use doesn't have any frontage, therefore they're not entitled to a building permit for the screen porch structure on top of the pier. But this, this business has been in existence, um, and so it's a pre-existing use that has protection and it, um, is entitled to that building permit.
Okay, I agree. Okay. Is anyone wishing to speak? In favor of the appeal? Anyone in favor of agreeing with the appeal? Anyone online? No? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the appeal? Did you want to, sir? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll close public testimony, discussion by the board and our motion. So we're going to make a, so it will have to be a positive motion to allow the appeal. But if you vote no, you're denying the appeal. Okay, everybody on the
I move, so
You're going to move in favor. We need a motion on the floor that's positive.
Yep, so I'm going to move approval of petition, uh, Charles Crowley and Claire Sanford. And it's not a special permit, right? Appeal the decision of the building commissioner to issue a building permit, the fifteen Biskie Head Point, construct an open structure on the pier pursuant to GZO one point six, the fifteen Biskie Head Point. So I'm moving approval of that, of that petition.
Need a second?
Second.
Made in seconded. We'll take a roll call vote and remind everyone, a yes vote, uh, grants the appeal and no vote denies the appeal.
Mr. Gelati?
No.
Mr. Canavo?
No.
Mr. Nyman?
No.
Ms. Norton?
No.
Mr. Preecey?
No.
We had a decision, we're ruled against the appeal and we upheld the building commissioner's decision. Thank you all. Okay, moving on. There's some actual building. Petition of Gerald Byrne, seeking a variance for front yard setback to construct a front entry pursuant to, uh, GZO one point seven, under three point two point one, at one fourteen Wheeler Street.
Uh, before we get started, I'm pretty sure he doesn't need a variance, needs a special permit. Because he's already in the setback, unless I've misunderstood. So he's extending an existing non-conformity is what he's doing.
It's, uh, he's altering, expanding a non-conforming structure, that's a
Doesn't need a variance.
No, special permit.
Right.
I agree.
Sir?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Jerry Byrne and I'm here with my wife, Karen McCormick. She's in the stripe shirt. We live at one fourteen Wheeler Street. And, um, we are here to ask permission to expand our front entry from forty-five square feet to a hundred nine square feet. More specifically, would like to, we want to reduce the front setback by eleven inches. The proposed entry that we want to do will be made out of stone instead of wood. So the base of the entry will be thicker, is the eleven inches. So the base of the entry will be thicker, is the eleven inches. Also, the entry will be more, in more proportion to the size of the house. It'll be four foot wider on either side and eleven inches deeper to the front. Overall, the front of the house, excuse me, overall, on the front of the house, we'll add plantings, stone walkways, a stone wall and gravel. There will be no changes to the grade, drainage, parking or access. More generally, we bought the house in two thousand ten and we've done a number of improvements over the years. So we hope that the front will complete the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one quick question. So will you still be maintaining the same amount of parking spaces that you had to have when you got the original approval?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Jerry, ultimately, you're, you're expanding an existing non-conformity. And what we have to ask ourselves is, are you doing that? I believe that you are. Um, and is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? That's the question that we're asking ourselves.
Okay. Take some public testimony. Is there anyone in, either in the audience or on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of the application? In favor, if you're on Zoom, you have to hit your raise hand button. And we will recognize you. If you're here, you come right up. We'll give us your name and address for the record, as with all public hearings. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, anyone in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Hearing none, we'll close public testimony. We'll move to a motion.
I can make a motion.
Go ahead.
Petitioner Gerald Byrne is seeking a special permit to alter and expand an existing non-conformity. So I, I believe that he is pushing into the front yard setback approximately one foot. Um, I don't believe it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists. I would move approval of the special permit.
Second.
Hey, James?
Yep.
Motion made and seconded to grant a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I approve. We will get you a decision out. And once you get all that, there's instructions on the process for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're writing that. Okay, our next hearing is the petitioner Benjamin Bradley Jr. Seeking a special permit to alter, expand a non-conforming structure and a variance beside yard setback to build a second story addition under one point nine and one point seven for the variance under three point two point one at forty-nine Two Penny Lane.
I'm going to comment again just for a moment. Doesn't look to me, unless I'm misunderstanding again, I'm pretty sure he does not need a variance on the right-hand side. I think he's already in that setback. Um, I don't like your site plan. You, I'll let you address that in a minute, but I don't think he needs a variance. I think you just need a special permit. Because I, I think from the, from the tables, he's already in that setback. He's just expanding that existing non-conformity.
Hey, go ahead, sir.
Hi, John. I'm, uh, Matt McGowan. I'm here on behalf of Ben Bradley. He's on Zoom.
Address?
Uh, the address for the project is forty-nine Two Penny Lane.
Oh, you are.
My address, uh, twenty-nine Winter Island Road, Salem, Mass.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, so we are seeking a special permit to expand outside the setback. While we're already in the, the setback, but to add an additional four and a half feet for a landing to provide a set of stairs to go to a second story addition that we want to add to the existing structure that's there.
Karen, I think my only comment about the, um, I don't have an issue with what you're asking for at all. Yep, that's not my issue. Um, I think what I don't like on the site plan is I just feel like there's any dimensions there. Because, I mean, in the table, he says he's at twenty feet and then he's expanding the four feet like he just said, and he's at sixteen. I don't see anything on the site plan helps. Do you have anything better? Yeah, so there's a small site plan and, and the house is there, but there's just no dimensions. So I guess as, as long as you sign something or note something or whatever, but there's really not, there's nothing there to solidify that, where that house is going to be on that site. Where that, where that new expansion is going to be.
So the, um, the expansion is to the second floor other than the stairway, correct? Is that what you read it?
Yep.
So it won't move other than the.
I'm fine if you are, I'm just saying there's not any dimensions on the site.
No, I get it, yeah, I know what you're saying.
It is.
Okay.
If it was new construction, I would, I would make this.
Yeah, we'd have to have a better plan.
I would.
All right, so as long as.
Give us a good site.
When we do get to the point, if we approve that, you know, you, you got to keep in mind, it's got to be on that footprint, other than the stairway.
I believe when you see the bigger set of plans that I have brought into their office, you, it might be on there a little bit better. Uh, some of this is a little bit harder to see on the smaller scale.
Okay.
I believe it is in there.
Thank you.
We believe you.
All right, we'll, uh, open public testimony. Is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Anyone in favor? No? Okay, anyone in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Seeing none, discussion by the board?
The petition of Benjamin Bradley Jr. Seeking a special permit to alter, expand a non-conforming structure. No variance, right? For a side yard, oh, excuse me, uh, to a, to build a second story addition pursuant to GZO one point nine. Only three point two point one at forty-nine Two Penny Lane. I don't believe this is more detrimental to the neighborhood. I move an approval.
Second.
We have a motion, motion made and seconded to grant a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure. At two, forty-nine Two Penny Lane. Yep, I got that. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? You've been approved, we'll get a decision out to you soon as humanly possible. Okay, thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Okay, moving along. The, uh, next is the petition of Alan and Farrah Bates. I noticed the last name wasn't in the write-up, but it's on the application. Seeking a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure and a variance for rear yard setback and lot coverage to construct an attached garage under three point two point one at ten Davis Street.
Bill, make a broken record just before you start, sir. No variance in the back, already in the setback. Right, if you look at the table, uh, he just doesn't, I don't mean to beach up over there, Rob. Just doesn't need the variance, that's all. Yeah, already in that setback.
Yeah.
He does need a tiny variance for lot coverage, barely. But he doesn't need one for the rear setback.
Go ahead, sir.
Alan Bates, ten Davis Street. And yeah, we're, we're asking to, uh, build a garage.
Right into the mic?
Yep.
You got to talk right in or they can't hear you at home.
Okay, Alan Bates, Davis Street. Yeah, we're asking to, uh, build a garage attached to our existing home. And the reason we're doing that is because of the, um, conditions in the winter. We're just getting more concerned about slipping on the ice and things. So with this, um, attachment, we'll be able to go right from our house into the garage, into the vehicle.
Okay, and this, uh, let me see.
So from what I could tell from your table, it looks like, um, you barely need a variance for your lot coverage. I had it like thirty point seven, seven or something like that.
Yeah, it's very.
Not even thirty-one percent.
Yeah, it's very, very.
But you do need a variance for it, but it's pretty, pretty de minimis.
Yep, right, yes, that's correct.
Right. Variance for.
Coverage.
That was a variance.
Yeah, okay.
And he does need a special permit in the back because he is pushing a tiny bit further into that setback. Yep. But clearly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay. We've got what you're doing, you can have a seat. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Please come forward. I remind everyone, please give your name and address first so we can record it.
Hello, Keith Trefry, number eight Davis Street. I'm in favor of the project.
Great, thank you for coming down. Anyone else wishing to support? Anyone online? Hearing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Okay, so we'll close the public testimony. And just to clarify again, we're looking at a special permit to alter and expand a special, I mean, a variance for lot coverage.
I can make a motion if you want.
Please.
Petition of Alan, uh, yep, petition of Alan and Farrah Bates. Seeking a special permit to alter and expand non-conforming structure and a variance for lot coverage, construct an attached garage pursuant to GZO one point nine, one point seven, three point two point one at ten Davis Street. Um, I would move approval for the special permit. It does increase an existing non-conformity. It's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, and I would also move approval for a de minimis, uh, variance for lot coverage. I think it's like thirty-five to forty square feet additional to what he's allowed. So I'd move approval of the special permit and the variance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to grant, as stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. We will, uh, get a decision out to you, sir, and you'll be, uh, good to go. Okay. Our next hearing is the petition of Brian Pollard seeking a special permit for an ADU in a variance for side yard setback to make a structural legal use pursuant to five point two four. And the variance is one point seven on table three point two point one at twenty-one High Popple's Road, represented by Seaside Legal.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joel Vaza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, one twenty-three Main Street. I'm here on behalf of Brian Pollard. Brian is here today in the green. Um, he is the owner of twenty-one High Popple's Road out in East Cluster. And so what we're looking to do today is we're not looking to change anything physically on the ground, not the structure, not the size, not the use. We're just trying to make things right that were not done right a long time ago by a previous owner. So on this property, we have two principal dwellings, which as you all know, is typically prohibited by the zoning ordinance. And again, at the risk of beating a dead horse, Brian did not put this there. It was there when he bought it. He bought it from the city, which is, uh, I'll get into in a moment. So we are in the R twenty, low, medium density residential district. The assessor's office already considered these both principal dwellings. They have single occupancy for each. The cottage appears to be constructed around nineteen seventy-three. Around nineteen eighty, a previous owner converted it to a dwelling unit. In nineteen eighty-three, they must have got busted because they came before your predecessors and were denied. Despite being denied, they never took any actions to discontinue it. So it's remained a continued, uh, separate principal dwelling unit since nineteen eighty. The city not only recognized the use through its assessing department, but it actually advertised this use when the city took the property in the tax lien and then sold it. Um, and we'll get to that in a moment. So the questions for you are whether we can get a variance from footnote three of section two point three point one, which prohibits more than one principal building on the lot. After the fact dimensional variances to clean up the fact that it's a little too close to a, a property line. And again, this is just allow everything that's been there and been going on since nineteen eighty to continue to, but for the first time, be properly permitted. And it's been a long process. So in this map, you can see the building in blue is what we're talking about. Brian lives in the one, um, with numbered, number twenty-seven. And you can actually see that funny little jog in the lot line, that little dash line, because that was the old lot line for this property. Um, this is, you know, just a floor plan kind of showing it's a, you know, kitchen, living room, bed, bath, a little storage and a little laundry room. And this is the picture itself. I'm not sure if you guys went out there to look at it, but that's the house. Here's another shot from the side. Shot from the rear again, it's got its own propane utilities. Just one more. And there's the aerial view of the lot. And there's the map geo. And this is the last picture, which is from the street. The, the, Brian's house is dead straight. And then to the right, uh, is the second house we're talking about tonight. So in order to grant a variance, we need you to find that literal enforcement would create a hardship for the owner. And that, that hardship relates to the soil, shape, topography of the structure or land in question, like granting the relief will not harm the public good or nullify the intent of the GZO. And because it's a use variance, technically, you show there's no other feasible and economic use of the property can be made. And so the first thing is we go literal enforcement or require the demolition because it's not only not allowed as a, as a second principal dwelling, it's also too close to the property line. So right there, this whole thing gets scooped out if you're going to strictly enforce the GZO. And although it is too close to the right side property line, it's important to note that although it's, um, ten point two, where it should be fifteen, it's actually a vast improvement. This overall process that Brian's been going through since he purchased it in two thousand and eleven has been to try and make things right. So when he first purchased it, this unbeknownst to him, the second unit was illegal. And unbeknownst to him, it was seven feet into the neighbor's lot. And so he actually went and, um, purchased the neighbor's lot when it became available so that he could redraw the lot lines and create at least ten feet of space. He couldn't go any closer because then it would have started violating the setbacks on the house on the next lot. But he, he went through this effort. Um, I don't know if, you know, any people try to move a lot line through registered land with Land Corps, but it's not easy. Again, it was just to kind of make things right. He didn't do anything to the house, didn't make it bigger, just tried to make things right. And so again, these hardships relate to actions wholly unrelated to him. He's done his best to make things better, but the hardships remain. Someone fifty years ago built this thing. When he bought it, again, he bought it from the city. Here's the actual advertisement. And it says right there, advertises as a, as a point of pride, "The guest house with six hundred and forty-eight square feet of living area with two bedrooms and one bathroom." So the city knew about it, not only in their assessors' records, but were using it as a marketing.
I object to that. Uh, an advertisement to auction off a piece of property only tells you what is there. It's not a warranty of what you can do with it. So I, that argument didn't sell with me in your application. But anyway, it's not a.
Yeah, sure, I'm just saying, you know, again, the, the city thought it was, the city, the city thought it was important enough to point as a, a selling point, right? If they were so concerned, you'd think they'd say, well, heads up, you know, illegal structure on the property. And so again, um, if we allow the, the relief we've requested to be granted, nothing changes. The same dwelling unit that's been there in use peacefully since nineteen eighty-three, or since nineteen eighty, rather, continues to be used as it has been. And you're just going to find there's no other feasible and economic use of the property. Again, since Mr. Pollard's owned it, this property has been taxed as a second separately. He's been paying taxes on a second dwelling unit this entire time. Um, and then again, although I'm sure there's the question of like, oh, well, you know, could this maybe be converted to an ADU? Again, that would be a diminution of the value of this piece. It has been a separate dwelling unit that is unrestricted as a dwelling unit, albeit without the proper permit. And to try and squeeze it in as an ADU, now you get into your short-term rental restrictions. You get into your inability to ever sell it as a separate condo unit, that sort of thing. And again, um, it's just putting restrictions that have not been in place. We're not trying to change anything for the better or for the worse. Trying to just make things right. And then the dimensional variance, very similar. Again, we need, um, nine point eight feet of relief for a twenty-foot side yard setback. We're at ten point two, which again, um, is seventeen feet better than it was because it was negative seven when Brian bought the property initially from the city. So I thank you in advance. As I said, we need a variance on the footnote and a variance on the dimensional. Thank you.
It was, um, in the write-up from the old time, there was discussion about septic, but that's all on Sue. It was in the write-up from the old time, there was discussion about septic, but that's all on Suenow, right?
Are you on Suenow? Yeah, so property.
You're in the Suenow. Okay. So that, moving that was no longer. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. You pay two bedrooms?
I don't know the answer to that.
That would determine what the city thought of it. Anyway. Any questions up front? Anyone? Application? Okay, let's.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just a little confused because the ad is not... So the ad is for, for an ADU? And you're basically saying?
Application.
We, we threw in like a secondary.
Well, you just didn't address it, that's all. I mean, I'm just.
Well, I'd like to get the, the variances.
No, no, I understand. I understand.
And if, if that's not the will of the board, but have that ADU discussion. But again, as I mentioned, it's just a reduction, you know. It's punishing someone from kind of out of the woodworks. He could have just, you know, kept mum about this and kept on going about, going about, right? Just come out of the woodwork and say, hey, listen, I didn't do this, but I know it's not right. I know we need housing. I'm going to try and just make this another legal unit in, you know, to say, oh, thanks for coming out and telling us we're going to take away the value inherent in it because you tried to do the right thing. You know, I'm trying to avoid having to go that route.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I can sort of, if this is the time, I can go back and forth with you on that point, but I don't need to yet, so.
All righty. Why don't we take testimony and see what the rest of the world thinks? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. If you're online, you hit your raise hand button to speak. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, anyone in opposition to the application? Anyone opposed? Nope. Seeing none, we're closed. Public testimony, no need for rebuttal.
Did you receive, did you receive, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, did you receive the letter in support?
From Bruce Toby.
We did get a, uh, two, wasn't it? Wasn't there a second one came in?
There might have been. I did see Bruce Toby.
Okay. Yeah, we did receive, uh...
Yeah, so, so just a, just a comment back. I said, that's one way to see it. You know, obviously that, and it sounds to me, and I commend him, he's, he's doing the right thing. The question that I ask myself, though, in situations like this is, and we ask, I ask myself in other situations when actually people do things that they shouldn't have done, which is not the case with Brian. Would I have granted that? Would I have voted in favor of that initially? Well, in this situation, no, absolutely not. No, two principal dwellings on the same lot? Well, of course not. Never vote for that. So I'm not in favor of the variance. I, I would be actually in favor of an ADU. I'm not looking to punish Brian. I'm not in favor of the variance because what you get from it is the ability to separate that lot. You get the ability to create a condo association there so that you now have two principal dwellings, which I'm not in favor of, you know, on the lot. So I don't want to punish him. I'm very comfortable with granting a variance for the ADU and stuff like that to allow him to, you know, use that building for profitability and, and stuff like that. But I'm, I'm not in favor.
Although it changes nothing.
I'm sorry?
Although it changes, you know, it just memorializes the status.
No, it does, it does change it because now he can legally do what he couldn't legally do before, which is create, you know, a condo association and, and again, I'm, I'm not a, I'm a property adjuster for crying out loud. I'm not opposed to a condo association, but I am in this situation.
But is there harm? I mean, let's, let's, you know, let's say he does that. Let's say, although Brian has not expressed interest, let's say, yeah, he converts it to a condo and sells it. So he sells a 678 square foot unit to someone. What's the harm? It's the same, same density, same distance, same driveway, same everything. Just goes from being a tenant.
Well, they could build it bigger now.
This would be granted, this would be created or legalized pursuant to variances. And he couldn't do anything to a user size without coming back before you to amend the variance. This, this only locks in what has been there since 1980. Does not give him the ability to expand or do anything different. There is an ownership component, I suppose, that this solidifies. But again, whether it's a tenant in there or a separate owner in there, still the same number of people, same number of cars, same number of use, et cetera. You know, I just don't.
Like it's, for me personally, it's a very different piece of property. If you're allowed, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if he chose to, he could split the lot. He could have two separate lots.
Or sell them.
You would not, you would not be able to split the lot because this, these structures don't predate, there's that little clause in the GZO. If you had two dwellings on one lot before subdivision control law came in, which I think was 1969.
Okay, yep.
This one would not count for that. There's no cutting this lot.
But he could sell it then instead of rent.
Yes.
He could convert to condo units, unit one and unit two. But again, but even if he did, who's harmed? No one's harmed. You're not derogating from the intent of zoning ordinance. It'd be the same thing, just instead of a tenant, it's an owner. If you've changed nothing, so maybe offered homeownership for, again, a 678 square foot condo, even then, East Gloucester is still going to be compared to what else property goes for out there, you know, wouldn't be a bad thing.
Oh. I mean, at first look, I thought, well, the ADU makes sense. I didn't have any issue with it. I guess, how deep do we want to dig into the ownership and whether it would deny him the ability to, as long, knowing that it can't, none of these could be expanded without coming back. Even a minor addition would, because this is all, this is being allowed by variance, would have to come back to us to alter the variance. So I guess that.
Yeah, so I think the mistake that I made and that I was just corrected as well is I thought that the lot could be split and it cannot be split.
Okay.
And I'd be adamantly opposed to splitting.
Yeah. Anyone wish to make a motion in favor of this?
On the petition of Brian Pollard seeking a special permit for, for doing all of it, ADU and...
Oh, we're going to grant just a variance.
Okay. Seeking a variance for side yard setbacks.
No, no, not even that. Weren't you seeking a variance to allow?
I was seeking a variance from footnote three of section 2.3.1 and a side yard variance of 9.8 feet. To allow the second principal dwelling to remain.
Yeah, so we're allowing two dwellings on one lot by variance, so, and the side yard.
Yep.
But not the ADU.
So seeking a variance for side yard setbacks and to allow two principal dwelling units on the same lot at 21 High Popples Road, I move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded to grant the variance for side yard setback, the variance to allow two principal dwellings on one lot. Roll call vote. Yeah, you can, anyone can ask for that.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
I think I've been convinced. Yes.
Ms. Norton? Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
I also vote yes. You've heard our decisions favorable. Appreciate a draft.
Happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, our last hearing of the night is the application. Petitioner Tobin Dominic trustee is seeking a special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure and to exceed the height and a variance for the floodplain pursuant to 2.4.5, 1.10, 3.1.6, and 5-5-7 at 43 Yeol County Road, represented by Seaside Legal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, for the record, Joel Favaza, 123 Main, sorry, Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street in Gloucester. Here on behalf of Tobin Dominic. Tobin is here tonight. And she is the trustee owner of 43 Yeol County Road. This is actually kind of near the Biskie Head properties that were up for discussion earlier today. And so we're asking to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming single-family home. You can sort of see the, the red outline, the gray area, although it is a demolition and rebuild. It's going to be on the same footprint so you can gauge, you know, the, the change and the scope of the, the structure. We are in the R10 medium-high density residential district. We have a conforming lot, which is always nice. But we have a non-conforming single-family home nonetheless. It is in the front yard setback area. It is also in the left side yard setback area. There is going to be partial expansion to the footprint. And that's triggering some issues because we are, the property is partially in the AE zone at elevation 13 for a floodplain. So we are asking for three pieces of relief. One is a special permit to demolish and replace. That's the 2.4.5. One is a special permit for height. This will be technically 31 feet above average grade. And we'll discuss later, the lot has a pretty big slope to it, and so we're getting an average grade that's pretty low based on the corners down by the driveway. And we need a variance from the floodplain regulations to exceed 10% of lot coverage within the AE zone. Per usual, I have all the plans. I don't know why this projector never plays nicely with them, but if you need them, we can go through them. What I do want to kind of highlight as I flip through these is that the property right now is in the floodplain currently and not currently built to floodplain standards. And the replacement structure, although will be still in the floodplain and will technically have increased the footprint as you look at it from a two-dimensional, it will remove all of the components of the existing structure that are currently in the floodplain, meaning at elevation 13 or below and not built to flood compliant standards. And this is a shot of the driveway of the existing house. And so you can see the garage area and the storage area to the left. All of that is both laterally within the floodplain and also vertically within the floodplain, and none of that is flood compliant currently. So for the 2.43/2.45 permit, it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure. It's just the substantial detriment to the neighborhood standard. I am arguing that the replacement structure is not substantially more detrimental. The demolition replacement being approved by the board in advance allows us to not have to worry about picking down too much and getting hauled back in here. We're going to ask upfront to assume it's all coming down. We're going to expeditiously reconstruct. We're not going to leave it a big hole in the ground for a year and a half. And the last part is that variance is obtained for a new encroachment. We don't have to worry about that because we're not creating any new encroachments. So we are actually decreasing the left side yard setback encroachment. And we're decreasing the intensity of use within the setback areas, basically taking the front and left side of the property and making them decks for the most part as the, as the portions of the property that encroach, or sorry, the portions of the structure that encroach become more like open, you know, unenclosed areas for the most part. We are surrounded by the Aniscorem River on the other side of the road. We have Greenbelt near us. There are no negative impacts to the neighboring lots. As you can see from this, again, there's no nearby neighbors that would be concerned with the fact that this house is getting rebuilt and getting rebuilt larger than it was to begin with. Again, this is the 2.45 factor. We talked about this. We're not creating new encroachments. We're going to reconstruct it quickly. And we are asking for the approval now to do so. So then we have the 31 feet above average grade. This is being driven in part by the topography of the site and by, again, the FEMA flood, the FEMA floodplain regulations, not even getting into the, the city floodplain. We have to make sure that the bottom, the lowest plane of the lowest member of the floor joists for the first habitable level are up above elevation 13. And to do that, unless you want to have this weird funky like five-foot space, you go, okay, we'll put parking underneath. That's typically how people solve that problem. They throw parking and other, you know, allowable floodplain construction underneath, which pushes the first floor up to a higher point. And again, as I mentioned, I think we're at like elevation 8/10 in the driveway and you're up by elevation like 22 toward the rear and the right. So all those corners down in the driveway are pulling your average grade down and making this house seem, you know, it'll seem tall from the driveway. It won't seem tall from the right. It won't seem tall from the back. So like I said, there's no other properties nearby. They're going to be impacted. You're not going to have obstruction of views. You're not going to overshadow other properties. You're not going to impair utilities or otherwise have adverse impacts as a result of going one foot above. And again, this is going to have, although there's some dormers in there, it is going to be a peaked roof. So it is that last foot of the peaked roof that is above. Everything below that, you know, they could make something really hideous and put a flat, you know, run across, but who wants to look at that, right? So then the last bit is the floodplain variance. And so we are in the AE zone and we highlighted it in green to show you which portion of the property is in the AE zone. And so the recently passed floodplain ordinance does not allow you to exceed 10% of coverage. We are already at 30.66 and it's going up to 44.84. And what I want to just couch that in is the majority, there is some addition of actual living space. Majority of that coverage is open air, pervious decking, all of which is being built to floodplain standards as set out by the applicable building codes and the.
I think you actually reduced the covered. I think it's from like 8.80 to 8.20, if I remember.
If you have, of like, yeah, enclosed habitable space, yes, less habitable space in the floodplain, but more coverage as the ordinance calculates it, unfortunately. So we have to, the variance would show that we're meeting requirements set up by state law, which we are. As I said, this would be floodplain compliant. Good insufficient cause and exceptional non-financial hardship. So again, we have the house located where the house is located. We have the topographical challenge of the fact that the house, the lot pushes up to the right. And we are in an environmentally sensitive area. When I'm, if I am successful here tonight, the next stop is Conservation Commission. And they are not going to want to hear that for the sake of avoiding this variance, we're going to be blasting out, you know, a third of the lot to try and shift, you know, the, the property further from the AE zone. And you have to make sure that we're not going to result in threats to the public safety, extraordinary public expense or fraud of the public. Again, this property is going to get safer from a flood standard. Because if we can't do anything about it, it just stays as it is. Then we have a, a house that was built quite some time ago not to floodplain standards. You allow the relief, we're able to build something to floodplain standards without having to do these things like new curb cut, blasting, et cetera. And so this is a nice little demonstration. So everything that's in gray is new. Everything inside the blue line is living space. The rest of that, again, is just all deck. But it looks really bad numerically. Oh, you're going from 30 to 44 and it was supposed to be 10. Well, again, like, that's really what's happening. And then, again, the, the second level kind of sits above. So we are, again, asking for a special permit to demolish and replace, a special permit for height, and a floodplain variance. Please and thank you.
Questions at this point?
I just had one question. So the current structure is 30% coverage and you're going to 45, but half of that delta, half of that 15% is decking, is that?
The majority of it is decking and removing some other structures that are, that are in the floodplain currently. But the majority of the, the majority of the expansion is going to be open air, again, just pervious decking, not living space.
Any others? No, I think, um, nice project. Um, the height exception is so minimal, it doesn't bother me. And certainly the demolition and rebuilding is, you know, it's where it is. I don't think I have a problem. We're all getting our arms around floodplain, which is still baffling us. But yeah, no, I get it. So I, I can support it.
I believe some member of the public may want to speak on this.
Yep. Any other discussion? Okay. So no other questions? We'll take public testimony. Is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Please come forward.
Good evening. Joseph Borland, 47, Yeol County Road. Could be considered a direct abutter only separated by Essex County Greenbelt. We own the property since 1965. We're in full support of all the special requests and the variances, and we only see this as a benefit to the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else in favor?
Good evening. My name is Brian Pollard, 21 High Popples Road, and this looks like a, an excellent project and fits the neighborhood, and so I'm in favor of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Seeing none, is there any opposition to the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, closed public testimony, entertain a motion or discussion, what you prefer.
I can make a motion if you want.
Thank you.
Petition of Tobin Dominic trustee is seeking special permit to demolish and replace pre-existing non-conforming structure and to exceed height and a variance for floodplain pursuant to 2.4.5, 1.10, 3.1.6, and 5.5.7 at 43 Yeol County Road. So as far as a special permit to demolish and replace, as long as you do it according to the standard, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The one-foot height special permit, I don't have any issue with that at all. There's no overshadowing, and I agree, you could cut it off there, it would be ugly, obviously. So it's a tiny, tiny, tiny triangle at the top of the house. And as far as the variance for the floodplain, I think you've satisfied the four things that I saw up there, as long as you include them in your decision. And I appreciate also that, like I said, I just did a quick look at the table, and it looks like you've actually reduced the roofed area by 5% or whatever it was. That's all pervious material around the perimeter that I think is really not affecting. So I'd move approval of both special permits and the variance in floodplain.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Okay, for the members of the board, our next meeting, May 29th. The ad's just going together, so it's three weeks out because this is a five Thursday month. So the packets won't be here tonight, but you'll be able to either take them, get them online, or stop by the building department when? By Monday? Anytime next week? And get your packet? There's eight hearings on the 29th, all new. That's why we pushed, as you recall, last meeting, 162 Western, that we pushed out because we wanted the, the proposed building staked out for us. We've been notified it is staked out.
Saw the photos, yeah.
Have you been over?
No, there was a email that Natasha sent over.
So it's there.
I'm going to go over, but it was pretty well laid out.
And, and see, you know, where this proposal is. And also that night will be the continuation, I'm not on, on the June 12th, of Grapevine Road tonight, once we get the legal. So those two pushes will be to June 12th, so I don't know how many apps will come in before then, but it is getting to be a busy time for.
Bringing me back when we used to be here till midnight, Joe.
Now, where are we here? I'm still on target, 8:30. So with that in mind, just so everybody knows what's happening, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, unless anyone has anything.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.